Good evening. We welcome you to tonight's debate sponsored by the University of Scranton Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service. The center goes by the acronym KEEPS. My name is Johnny Sinclair. I'm an intern for KEEPS. ECTV is taping tonight's debate. This is not a live broadcast. The taped debate is also available on YouTube via links from the KEEPS website. Tonight's debate offers an opportunity for voters to learn about the candidates running for Lackawanna County Commissioner so that you, the voters, can make an informed choice at the polls on November 7th. It is my pleasure to introduce our four candidates for this evening. Diana Campbell, Chris Shermack, Bill Gahin, and Matt McGloin. For more information about the candidates, please see their bios by visiting the Resources tab on the KEEPS website. At this time, I would also like to introduce our moderator for this event, KEEPS Steering Committee member, Dr. Jean Harris.
Thank you, Johnny. And this is how we will proceed. The candidates will have two minutes to answer each question unless I specify otherwise. Any time not used to answer a question is gone. Time cannot be saved for future questions. Our timers will hold up a 30-second sign for the candidate to see when there are 30 seconds left and then they're timed to answer. And when two minutes are up, our timers will hold up the stop sign. The candidate who is answering may complete their sentence after the stop sign is held up, but if you've gone too long, I will probably have to interrupt you. Each candidate has three one-minute rebuttal opportunities. If the candidate wants to respond to an answer given by their opponent, they just need to ask for a rebuttal. Any time not used during a rebuttal is gone. We do not accumulate time. So if the candidates are ready, we will get started with the first question. Based on the earlier drawing, Matt McGloin will go first with the first question and also with the closing statement at the end.
One and one.
So, thank you. So, the first question. Matt, what particular experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as an effective Lackawanna County Commissioner?
Well, that's a great question. First and foremost, I have to thank my beautiful wife, who's not here tonight. We have a four-year-old and a one-year-old, so she is home with the children. I thank her for her support, and I want to thank the candidates up here tonight as well. It takes a lot of courage and a lot of work to be able to put your name on the ballot. You know, I was fortunate to have two great parents. My mom, who instilled in my brothers and I at an early age, never forget where you come from. I never have and I never will. And a father who worked for the city of Scranton for almost 30 years. He worked in the OECD department. He worked in the Parks and Rec Department. He taught my brothers and I the importance of serving and the importance of being active in your community. You want to talk about experience, right? The world that I come from and the previous career that I was involved in was obviously, you know, professional sports and being a professional athlete. I've had the opportunity to work for some of the best organizations in the world. I've seen the structure. I've seen the discipline. I've seen the commitment to excellence on a daily basis. And I've also seen on a daily basis what's demanded out of employees and what is demanded out of people that work there each and every day. I understand. I'm the new guy here. I'm new to this world. I'm new to politics. I simply want to be able to help do my job, to help make change, and to help make Lackawanna County the very best place to live, to work, and to raise your families. And to have the opportunity to run with this guy sitting next to me, a former councilman and a former president of council. I think when you combine Gahin and McGloin, you get one of the best teams Lackawanna County has seen in a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana, the same question to you.
Sure. So I've been on Borough Council in Mayfield for eight years. In the last couple of years, I've been council president. So I've gotten to see the nuts and bolts at a borough level of how government works. We have to do a lot of work as council members because we have one staff member that is in the office. The other staff member we have is a DPW worker, which he's great. They're both great employees. But there's a lot of things that have to be done as a council member and that my rest of my council members, we've really gotten to work together on grant funding, interacting with our representatives at the state and local level and the federal level with Representative Cartwright and Senator Casey. Just being able to interact with them and to get things done at a local level has been great. And the support that we've gotten from the county has been incredible. So taking all of that and seeing how I've been supported at the municipal level, I'd love to bring that up to the county. I think I'll be a great commissioner because I've gotten to work in this world already for eight years, and it's been good.
Thank you. Chris, the same question?
Well, I've been doing it for four years, so I'm already off to a start there. But, you know, growing up, I was third generation in our family automobile business. I grew up from the ground up. Also, you know, as I got older, you know, I went from working in the shop to working in the office and then basically running the multi-franchise dealership. So, you know, I have many, many years of business experience. Other things that I've done in my life, too, I'm a lifelong first responder. I volunteered with multiple fire departments throughout my life, still do. Volunteer for the National Ski Patrol System at Elk Mountains. I still continue, 27 years, I guess, this year. And that's what I've done. I've volunteered throughout the community, church picnics, all Steampound marathons. So, you know, public service is something I'm used to doing and I enjoy doing it. And I love my job as a commissioner. I go to work every day, seven days a week usually, and go to my office at least five days a week. But it's a great opportunity for me to continue the service that I've been doing for a long , long time. I enjoy it.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you. I, when I was in my early twenties, I started to work for the Office of Economic and Community Development in the city of Scranton. So I was there for about two and a half years. And in that position, I really got a really good understanding of how city government works and at the same time how county government works because the two of them, of course, interact along with the Scranton School District. And because I saw what happened in City Hall, I really got a love for public service and for government. So I decided to leave that position and to run for Scranton City Council when I was 26-years-old. And I was elected, and I served for eight years as a councilman. The last two, I served as the president of City Council. And during that time period, in 2013 and 2014, the city of Scranton was in a very precarious financial position, somewhat very similar to the position that the county is in now financially. The county, at this moment in time, has a $15 million budget deficit. Over the past several years, they've used one-time revenue sources to cover those budget gaps. The city was doing the same thing. The county has a huge problem with funding the pension. They've underfunded the pension over the last few years in the amount of somewhere around $13 million. The city of Scranton was in that same position. So my experience on council was, is going to be a huge benefit if I'm elected as a Lackawanna County Commissioner because I was part of a team over the course of eight years that was able to guide the city of Scranton out of financial distress. The other experience that I have as a councilman, and it was an unfortunate experience, was to see local corruption. When I was a councilman, we had a mayor who went to prison and who is still in prison. And that was so unfortunate to see that. But it was an experience that I'll never forget. And I didn't just sit there and let it happen or watch it happen. I acted. I was one of the only people in city government that was able to rewrite the ethics code and revive the ethics board. And that still is in place today, and it still is benefiting the city. So I'm going to do the same thing if I'm elected as a county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question starts with you, Diana. Let's resume, and let's assume you are elected to the county commission. Please tell us what your top priority will be and explain why it is your top priority.
Sure. When I'm elected with Chris, we're going to look right into that budget and figure out, just start working on it and get the, figure out where the spending can get cut and where we can close up the holes and work on closing that deficit that there is. And that's my top priority.
Thank you. Chris, the same question to you. Your top priority and why is it?
Top priority is like what Diana said, is the budget. I've been laser-focused on our budget since I got in the door. And there are some, there's a lot of savings that could be done. You know, last year, we had a projected $8 million deficit. And that comes with a wish list, too. But as far as the $8 million deficit, you know, my team and I looked the numbers over, scoured the budget, and we identified over $5 million in savings just easily. When it got done, this year's budget ended up being, we had $100,000 surplus. So, you know, going over the budget is something that we're used to doing, and we're going to continue doing that. The $15 million deficit this year, again, is part of that as a wish list, and we're going to chop that as much as we can. And we do have a structural deficit in this budget. You know, it's tough being a minority commissioner when you go to work every day and you're trying to do these things. And, you know, sometimes you're fighting, you know, you're fighting the majority. So hopefully, when Diana and I get in there, we can work together and we can balance this budget. So that's going to be absolutely our top priority.
Thank you. Bill?
Yes, thank you. Well, I think the biggest issue right now in the county, obviously, if anybody's been paying attention and reading the newspaper, is that there is a $15 million deficit going into next year. Not only that, but the bond rating for the county was just lowered from A- to, I think, triple B, which is obviously not good because the, to borrow money now, it's going to cost more money to do any kind of borrowing. So that has to be the focus, and that is going to be the focus of Mr. McGloin and I get elected as the Democratic Majority Commissioners. I, quite frankly, see a lot of parallels between where the county is now financially and where the city was in 2013 and 2014. Right now in the county, there is no long-term financial plan. Last year, as Commissioner Shermack said, there was about an $8 million deficit. And the county is making, I think, the same mistakes that the city made historically, which was to use one-time revenue sources to try to cover that budget gap. We can't do that anymore because there is no more one-time revenue sources. So something's got to give. What I would do, what Mr. McGloin would do if we're elected as Lackawanna County Commissioners, is to immediately work with the state. The state has a strategic financial management program that counties can get involved in. And there are people out there, there are financial experts and financial companies out there that will come in, just like they did with the city of Scranton 10 years ago, to help turn the ship around, to help right the ship. Because you can't continue to govern with $15, with $8 million, $15 million deficits. Something's got to give. So that has to be, I think, the number-one priority, and it will be the number-one priority if we're elected as county commissioners.
Thank you.
Number-one priority, correct? Right? Absolutely agree with what Bill has to say there. But, you know, I want to change gears a little bit here. I think a big priority for us as well, and I think these two topics really do go hand in hand, it's economic development and it's workforce development. You know, far too often along this campaign trail, Bill and I, whether it's knocking on doors or whether it's at certain events, we've had conversations with people who sit down on Sunday afternoons for dinner, they sit down on birthdays, they sit down on holidays, and they look across the table and there's an empty chair there. And it's their son or their daughter or their grandson or their granddaughter have since moved on to another city, Philadelphia, New York, Virginia, or wherever, for another opportunity. We have to be able to attract, sustain, and grow businesses here in Lackawanna County. The county currently does a really good job of working with the Chamber of Commerce. We have to continue to develop that relationship with them. But we also have to do our job as well, be able to pick up the phone and actively recruit businesses to come here in Lackawanna County and see how special this area truly is. Montage Mountain, the amphitheater, there's great food, there's great restaurants, there's great golf courses here in Lackawanna County. I mentioned workforce development as well. You know, it's being able to establish that talent ecosystem or that talent pipeline. It's increasing our commitment to public education, whether that's county initiatives during the school year or summer programs, right? Take a look in the area. There's a number of colleges here in the surrounding areas. It's being able to work with these presidents and establish programs, being able to establish better vocational trade technology programs for our students here so they have the skills necessary for the jobs of the future. Better vocational, better trade, better technology programs as well. So there's certainly a lot of concerns out there, but as Bill had mentioned, the budget is a big priority of ours and economic development, workforce development.
Thank you. Chris, this question goes to you first, and this is dealing with transparency and accountability. Transparency and accountability are essential to a healthy representative democracy. What can you do or put in place as a county commissioner to make the county government more transparent for and accountable to the county residents?
Sure, give me that one first. Okay. Transparency is something that I've always been, that's how I operate. Our team, same way. I don't even know how to explain it. Accountability, making sure people, where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be there. You know, we have 1,100 employees. We have buildings full of people, department heads. Everybody has to be accountable. Everybody needs to be, you know, transparent in what they're doing, whether it's the treasurer's office, the voter registrations office, get over to the prison system. So, I don't know. That's about it.
Thanks. Bill, the same question?
Sure.
Chris? Bill? Sorry, that's me.
That's okay. I had a chance to, when I was on City Council, as I mentioned earlier, to rewrite the ethics code. The ethics code in the city at that time really had no teeth in it at all. And the ethics board was in place, but there was no meetings, and they hadn't appointed anyone in a very long time. So we were able to revive that board. The county has an ethics code. It's only about four pages long. I don't think there's really a lot of teeth in it. And the last time, when it was adopted, was in 2008. So one of the first things that Mr. McGloin and I are going to do is to revisit the ethics code, to make it stronger, to look at what other counties are doing in terms of ethics and transparency. And what I would like to do is to create a county ethics board, also to implement campaign finance reform. Everyone told me that that couldn't be done on the city level, and we did it. We instituted campaign finance reform so that one person cannot buy an election. They can't write a check for $30,000 or $40,000. We limited to what the congressional candidates, what the federal, candidates for federal election, what they're able to take from people, which I think at that time was $2,700, and then it would go up with inflation. So to answer your question or to summarize what I said, I think ethics is important, and along with ethics comes, of course, transparency. You know, I've seen in my experience in public service that sometimes when people get in office, they want to shy away from answering any questions. And when they have an idea or they have a plan, they don't want people to pick it apart. The best thing that could happen in public service and politics is to have your plan picked apart, is to have people examine it from the public and the press. And if it's a good plan and you believe in it, then let people pick it apart. That is the best process. And just shine a light on everything. We want a comprehensive analysis of every department, every board, every authority, and every commission and county government that has not been done in a long time. And we want to be transparent about it. And I think that'll go a long way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
You know, it's funny, you just mentioned comprehensive analysis because that's exactly what I was writing down. Bill, but no, Bill was right. That's exactly one of the things that we want to be able to do, is take a look at each department, break down each department or an audit, if you will, and see exactly what the county has and exactly what the county owns. I would love for there to be a state of the county yearly to tell the people of Lackawanna County exactly where we stand and exactly where we're going. Where we're going. That's something that Bill and I talk about all the time, is we need more transparency right now here in county government.
Thank you. Diana?
So I've gotten to be a part of a council that has really worked hard about putting accountability in place for a long time. We've had longtime employees, and it's just been, it was good for a long time, I'm sure, but we came in and we've been putting some things in place in the last couple of years. It's not real popular, but it's, you know, simple, simple things like a time clock or a timesheet that haven't been done for years. And it's not because anybody was being dishonest, it's just because accountability is important. We need to know when people are off or when they need to, when they want to be, you know, taking a vacation or whatever, we would like to know before. So putting those kinds of things in place and working on an employee handbook, we, in Mayfield, we had never had that. So we've been working on putting that in place. So I think that's part of the accountability aspect. And as far as transparency and a couple of other things in Mayfield, from my experience that we've done in the last couple of years, we've had development coming in. And we wanted to make sure that every single resident in Mayfield knew, like, hey, we might have warehouses coming in. We wanted them to come to our public hearing. So we did a door-to-door leaflet drop-off. Obviously, I can't do that in the county, but in Mayfield, we were able to do that. And I think the bottom line with that is, it's really, they valued that. They, the residents in Mayfield said, wow, you really cared about what we thought, and you let us know that. Another thing, we were looking at a regional police department. And we, again, we told every resident via a flyer, like, hey, this is happening. Please come to the meeting, let us know your thoughts. So communicating with the residents of Lackawanna County is going to be just as important, although other means will have to be used because I can't go door-to-door on foot. But transparency and accountability is very important in all aspects of government.
Thank you. Bill, you'll get this question first, and it deals with elections, the foundation of U.S. democracy. Across the country, county poll and election office workers have experienced increasing incidents of harassment, including threats of violence. Many states and counties are running into election day staffing problems as poll workers resign and retire. How can the county government support the work of election workers to ensure that they can do the job of conducting elections in an efficient and secure environment?
Sure, thank you. I really, truly believe that Lackawanna County has one of the best election departments in the entire state of Pennsylvania. So I just want to start off by saying that we are one of the shining stars in Pennsylvania in terms of doing things the right way with our elections. It is very difficult in 2023 to get people to work on election day. I think one of the things we have to do is look across the country at what other counties are doing. And that's one of the things that Mr. McGloin and I are committed to, is to taking a look at what other progressive counties across Pennsylvania and really across the United States are doing in terms of supporting their election workers and possibly increasing their pay. As everybody here knows who's ever been involved in an election day, it's a very, very long day. And that judge of election or the person that's working in that building, they have a lot of responsibility. So I think we need to do everything in our power to make sure we continue to recruit people to do that because it is so very important to make sure that they're protected so that they're not harassed, which I don't think there's been any, and I have not heard any accounts of that happening in Lackawanna County, thank God. And to make sure that we continue a cycle of making sure that these polls and these polling places are staffed properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
You know, I think it was last November, so before I was even a candidate, my father and I actually went around the county to different polling locations and, you know, passed out donuts to some of the workers. And it was just, it was really incredible to see how many people were involved on election day, how many people were out, and how many people were actually working. And Bill is correct here. Our voter registration has done a tremendous job. It is one of the best in the state. We haven't had some of the problems that some of the counties around us have had. And, you know, as commissioners, it's continuing to ensure that that process is fair and transparent. And that's what we need to do moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana?
Election day is a long day for a poll worker. I was a poll worker. That's how I first got involved in any kind of local government. It is a very long day, and it's often retired folks that have the time. And they're troopers getting there early in the morning and staying late at night. I think that often there's a constable stationed at the polling places for extra protection, although I've never seen any craziness, especially in Mayfield. It's pretty quiet in Mayfield. But, you know, encouraging each community, I think, to find poll workers and encourage people to work and practice their community services is one way to build it up. And yeah, it's a long day, but try to make it fun and encourage people to do it. It's helpful to everyone.
Thank you. Chris?
So, yeah, we do have a great department. We have a lot of great departments. The voter registration, you know, we did that. Our administration put a great team together. You know, we were dealt with a, we were, I can say, blessed with a worldwide pandemic. And we had to really, really think outside the box in how we were going to do some of these things. Getting people to work, we can't get people to work for any job anymore. It's very difficult. Everybody's looking for help. Our voter registration people are working on, they're working very thin. Even our own office, there's not too many people, and there's only a few. They do a phenomenal job. The people out in the field, they do a great job. You know, we're trying to help every way we can. We bought all-new equipment to help count mail-in ballots and absentee ballots and help sort these things out. You know, but we put a whole team together. We bring people in from other departments, and that's why Lackawanna County led the state. And we were the first to get finished in the first major election in the state. And that's because of how our administration put teams together, got all the department heads together, and they were able to all work together as one big team, and it did a great job. Everything that we do in that office is secure, and I believe that they do a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Matt, you'll answer this question first, and it deals with property reassessment. Would you support legislation at either the state or county government level that mandates property reassessment on a fixed schedule, such as every 10 years? Please explain your answer.
So, I would, yeah. So we're currently, obviously, going through reassessment, and, you know, I think we're at the point now where we need solutions for reassessment. You know, this is another conversation that, you know, I've encountered a lot throughout the campaign trail over the last year or so. And it's seniors. Seniors are worried, seniors are concerned. People have been in their homes for a very long time, people that have been living on a fixed income. We cannot put our seniors in a position where they have to decide to pay their taxes or pay for their medication or pay for their groceries. When Bill Gahin and I hopefully have the chance to be elected, we'll ensure that the reassessment process will be fair or be transparent, and you'll have access to a fully-staffed office capable of managing if you feel your tax assessments are out of line. We also need to be able to talk to our attorneys, talk to legal, and see if there's some type of relief that we can be able to provide for our seniors or people that have been home, people that have been in their homes for a very long time, you know, potentially some type of homestead exemption. So, I mean, it hasn't been done in a very, very long time. But we have to be prepared for it. We have to be ready for it. We need solutions for it. And please remember this, reassessment was initiated before Bill Gahin and I elected to run for office. We can't make up for the actions of a previous administration. All we'll be able to do is make the best with what we have, and we will be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana?
Could you just repeat that question?
Sure. Would you support legislation at either the state or county government level that mandates property reassessment on a fixed schedule, such as every 10 years?
Okay, that's the part I wanted to hear, what you had to say. So, yeah, reassessment, as far as, I still can't get the words, but that's okay. The county level, I would. State level, not necessarily. I think it's important to keep local control local. And so as far as, I think we need to have a plan, and whatever that plan might be at the county level, that would be great if we put something into place. I think that's going to be very important moving forward. And when Chris and I are elected, that will be top priority when it comes to reassessment, having a plan going forward, and also having a plan for seniors and those on fixed incomes. It's absolutely necessary. And again, we know reassessment has to happen. It hasn't happened in a very long time, so it is necessary. But we have to have some things happen before we can actually go forward with the whole plan.
Thank you. Chris?
So, to answer your question, yes. So, I voted no for the reassessment. And not because I don't think we need to do reassessment. It's been 50-plus years. We know we need to do it. It's unfair to a lot of people. But there was three reasons why I said no to the reassessment. First of all, we were in the middle of a pandemic. It was poor timing. Number two, was what was the plan we were going to do to help people on fixed incomes and the elderly? We didn't have a plan. Number three was the answer to your question. When are we going to do it again? Are we going to wait 50-plus years again? Or are we going to put a plan in place? So until I had answers to those three questions, I couldn't vote for it. Moving forward, my team and I, we've discussed this. We've talked to other states, counties in other states, and how they're doing things. And they have plans in place to help with senior citizens, to help people on, people that are on fixed incomes. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Florida does a rolling reassessment where, as the markets change, the values change Florida does a rolling reassessment where as the markets change, the values change and the taxes change. So we need to look at how other states and how other counties are doing it. Also, I've said at the last debate, you know, I would like to lobby, and I have lobbied Harrisburg to look at a different way of funding school districts. Right now, that's the biggest part of our taxes is the school taxes. And it's just getting out of hand. People can't afford it. So there's a lot of things we need to do, but yes, there definitely has to be a plan in place when the next reassessment is going to happen.
Thank you. Bill?
Yes, I would support that legislation. I think, I looked this up today because I assumed this question was coming in some form. And the last time a reassessment was conducted in Lackawanna County, a cheeseburger at McDonald's cost 18 cents, if you can imagine that. So I do support it for two reasons. Number one, look how long it has taken for the county to be in a position where they're conducting a reassessment. They started it once before and then stopped it. In this particular case, they were going to be forced to do it anyways. I think Schoolkill County, maybe 10 or 20 years ago, was forced to conduct a reassessment because a group of taxpayers took the county to court and the court ruled that it was inherently unfair. So no matter what, the county was going to be forced to do it, whether the commissioners voted for it or they didn't vote for it. So that's number one. Number two, I would support that legislation because I don't think that you can leave it in the hands of elected officials who, these current county commissioners voted to do it. Well, who knows if 10 or 15 or 20 years from now, whoever the next county commissioners may be, will do it. And then you're leaving the county government in limbo. There's no continuity. There's no stability. And you're going to potentially end up in the same situation that we are today. So I think it's a good idea. It gives, would give county, the county commissioners across the state stability, and it would also give taxpayers stability too because they would know naturally what's coming.
Thank you. Rebuttal? Sure.
Well, not really a rebuttal, but kind of.
It'll go down as one, though.
What's that?
It will go down as a rebuttal. Okay.
But the big thing with the reassessments, and Bill is right, you know, we're going to be forced to do it, but maybe not. We didn't know that. You know, the court could have ruled in our favor and said, no, let it go. But that's not going to fix the problem. But the key thing now is that it's got to be done fairly. It's got to be done correctly. And I can tell you right now that Diane and I aren't flipping that switch until these things are in place. So we have safety nets in place for these folks and that everything is covered. Then we can initiate the reassessment.
Thank you. Diana, this question will go to you first, and this deals with the county's business climate. What is one action you would propose to your colleagues on the county commission to improve the county's business climate so that employment opportunities that provide living wages are created?
Give me 10 seconds. I think our relationship with the Scranton Chamber that Commissioner Chirmac began when he took office four years ago has been vital to the county's business, encouraging businesses to come to our area. And I think the Chamber does a really good job. I'm not an expert in economic development or anything like that, but I think the things I've seen happening as I've interacted with people at the Chamber has been pretty incredible. And experiencing it in Mayfield as well with our developers that are coming in and talking with us about just bringing jobs to our area and all of that. And I think as much as I could, I would encourage the other commissioners to work with local municipalities, help them have an understanding of what they can do to promote businesses in each of their municipalities. I had that in Mayfield from the county, from people in the county, the Economic Development Department in the county, as well as the Chamber came and sat with us and kind of walked us through that and encouraged us along the way. And I think the relationship with the county and the municipalities, I wanted to see that continue to grow and be stronger, again, especially when it comes to economic development, so that local municipalities feel very supported in that.
Thank you. Chris?
Like Diana mentioned, you know, I started campaigning three years before the primary when I ran for commissioner. And one of my first visits, if not my first visit, was with the President of the Chamber of Commerce, Bob Durkin. And that was my question to him is what relationship does Lackawanna County have with the Chamber? Well, they didn't have one. So when I got in, that was the first thing we'd done. We mended the relationship there. I mean, they're the experts. They're the ones doing this every day. They have the teams there. Our Economic Development Department has three people in it. So you know, it's a monumental task just for a county office to handle that. So working with the Chamber was huge, especially when the pandemic hit because the whole world shut down. So once we were able to get through that, our county Economic Development Department, we helped get ARPA funds and get funds into the businesses in the local area. I fought for businesses to be able to remain open when they were shut down. So there was a lot of things that we did at our level, but really, you know, I don't want to keep throwing this all in the chamber, but the Chamber is a big part of what we do here in Lackawanna County with their incubators and the things that they have and just everything that they do with the warehousing and the buildings going up. I mean, it's just a huge asset to us. So that's a huge part of what we do and how we're going to move this county forward.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you. The first thing that I would do is, and I mentioned this earlier, I really do think there has to be a comprehensive analysis and review of every single county department. And that would also include the Economic Development Office. Commissioner Chirmac mentioned that there's only three people there. And that's the same problem that we had in the city was we knew what the programs were, but we just didn't have enough bandwidth to be able to do the things that we wanted to do. So are there ways that we can get grant money to bolster the Economic and Community Development Office? So that is one thing that I would do. The second thing is I would increase the investment that the county is making in the Tech Accelerator Program. Mr. McGloin and I had the opportunity to visit the Scranton Enterprise Center. And we were amazed at what is happening in Lackawanna County with these small tech startups. Just within the last few months, Pennsylvania alone has added over 10,000 tech jobs. And in the process, Lackawanna County is becoming a hotbed, we think, for technology. So I think we can make a bigger, a much bigger investment in that to help these small startups. And then what we saw when we were at the Scranton Enterprise Center was they're expanding at a rapid rate. The county has already very smartly made, has made an investment. I think we should look towards ways of increasing that. One of the things that I found to be very successful when I was at City Council was the small business loan to grant programs. So the business would, the city would grant the business a loan. And then if they produced a certain amount of jobs, that loan would turn into a grant. And I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but it helped so many small businesses. And also, even in terms of something as small as a facade grant, for those small business owners or business people to help improve the front of their businesses, to make it more appealing to those across the county and in the case when I was on council across the city. So I would continue to make those investments.
Thank you.
So I think I touched on this a little bit earlier with economic development, workforce development. You know, and Bill had mentioned the Chamber, which obviously continued to develop our relationship and work with the Chamber is crucial. On top of what Bill was saying, the Chamber has an incredible program called their Ignite Program. You know, and that's, you know, deals with entrepreneurship support, which in turn helps create jobs as well. I believe continuing to invest in our small businesses, community and support them is vital to their success as well. You know, one of the things too that I can, that I really think can be beneficial and help is improving and continuing to, continuing to improve, excuse me, the quality of life here in Lackawanna County. You know, one of the questions that businesses will ask when they come here to Lackawanna County after they mention, you know, the workforce development is how are your schools? And how's the quality of life here in Lackawanna County? You know, we have to continue to make sure that our parks stay vibrant, where people can gather, they can exercise and they can enjoy being outside and they can enjoy being home. And you know, another area that I think can be a major focus for us moving forward is our Arts and Culture Department as well, you know, with cultural events, murals, beautiful murals all throughout the city of Scranton, throughout the county, festivals. There's potential for much more outdoor recreational activities, you know, as well. So I think Arts and Culture can play a massive role as well in helping increase tourism, people wanting to continue to come back here to Lackawanna County, knowing and understanding how beautiful it is and that there's always something going on here at home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, you'll get this question first, and it deals with the Office of Youth and Family Services. What do you believe is the necessary and proper role of the county commissioners in resolving the problems being confronted by the Office of Youth and Family Services?
Well, that's a very difficult department. They do very difficult situations every day. The poverty level in some of these areas is just awful. And you know, our offices, they're doing a good job. The situation that they're in right now, some of it are legal matters, so I can't talk about a lot of things. But you know, number one is that office is follow, we follow state guidelines. We don't, we're not running that thing by ourselves. We follow strict guidelines set by the state. For the things going in to taking kids out of homes, we don't do that. Yeah, I mean, the rules came down from the Supreme Court. We're not allowed to go in and take kids. The only thing, the only people that can take kids are people with badges, whether it's a police officer or somebody from the district attorney's office. But what's going on in there now is, first of all, we're understaffed. Again, it's hard to get people to come to work. We hired an agency to come in and help us with temporary help so that the experts in our departments could focus on some of the more important things. Some of the temporary people can come in and they can start doing some of the administrative things and some of the things that go on every day. But what's going on in there now is, I mean, what it's going to come down to is the question is, was the law broken? And you know, I just, I know some of these people. They're dedicated. They're not overpaid. It's a very difficult job. And you know, but we got to improve that. We're working on that. And the department that we have or the temporary department or company that we hired is helping us get some employees there. And then now it's going to fall under the umbrella of the new health department, which is going to be key. But our director is on top of this stuff and we're working on it.
Thank you. Bill?
Yes, thank you. I mentioned quite a few times tonight about a comprehensive analysis and review of every single county department, board, authority and commission. And there's no department in the county that needs that more than the Office of Youth and Family Services. I have five children under the age of eight. When I read the newspaper and I heard, and then I heard on the news the conditions that those children were living in, my heart broke in pieces, as I'm sure all in this audience, you experienced the same thing that I did. You can tell a lot about a community by the way that they treat their children. This is bigger than, I think, just the Office of Youth and Family Services. This goes beyond that. It's a societal problem for sure. But the county commissioners are tasked with making sure that that office is run in a manner in which every, excuse me, every single child is protected and that no child should be living in those conditions. And when you find out that a child lives in those conditions, immediate action should be taken. I truly believe that an outside group of people, experts in the field of human services and family services, should be tasked with taking a look at this department. I did not really agree with the, and I didn't really think it was a good idea for the current director to do that. In these types of cases where there's, part of the leadership is in question, I think you really need to have people who are not currently involved take a look at it. The second thing is trust. Trust has to be rebuilt here between the Office of Youth and Family Services, between the district attorney's office and between the police department. There obviously has been a complete breakdown in communication. I think you need to get every stakeholder in this county together at a table, put whatever egos are there aside, and realize that you're fighting for the lives of these children and that's it. And everyone has to trust each other. And the last thing I'll say on this is it's not just the Office of Youth and Family Services. It's not just the county commissioners. Every single person in this community should be concerned if one child, one child is suffering like that. We should all be concerned with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
The team dynamic is broken. And as Bill had mentioned, we have to be able to bring together our Office of Youth and Family Services, the DA's office and law enforcement. We have to be able to bring in outside experts to take a look, a fresh perspective, new thoughts, new ideas here. And staffing is a major issue. And I'm not sure what they're currently at in terms of staffing, but that is a major issue that needs to be corrected immediately.
Thank you. Diana?
I know that the Office of Youth and Family Services is funded by the state. And I know that the state does come in and audit. And as Commissioner Chirmac mentioned, that they do follow strict state guidelines. So it's good that the state does come in and audit and then they find the problems as needed. And as far as the commissioners go, I think it's just important to make sure that good people are in charge and that they're doing their job. And we have to be able to oversee that as good, to the best of our ability. Try to, again, convene people, move them in the same direction. And hopefully these problems will shake themselves out eventually and we'll keep after it.
Thank you. Bill, this question goes to you first. It deals with infrastructure. Earlier this month, the Lackawanna County Commissioners formally introduced ordinances that authorize borrowing of 28.4 million for infrastructure projects. What infrastructure projects do you believe the county government should prioritize if it's going to borrow 28.4 million dollars?
Thank you. Well, let me just start by saying that when I was a councilman back in, from 2014 to 2021, one of the major mistakes that was made historically in the city of Scranton was to neglect and ignore some of the infrastructure. Number one, because the city simply did not have the money to do that. And they were hesitant to borrow money at that time. But the, what happens is when you let it go and when you neglect it, it's still going to be there. It's never going to go away. So the bridge that is defunct today in 2023 is going to be falling apart even worse three years from now. So there's the old saying that you fix the roof when the sun is shining. So I don't necessarily disagree with governments borrowing money and reinvesting it in the infrastructure. I think obviously bridges are a huge issue. They were a huge issue when I was a councilman and they're a huge issue in the county. I think the county buildings, I know that the prison roof is an issue from what I read in the newspaper. But I think making sure that the infrastructure is in good shape is going to save us money in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I can, I agree with Bill. You know, I do understand that the prison roof, the courthouse renovations, fixing bridges, fixing roads is something that can be, you know, classified as critical need. And as Bill had mentioned, when you push something like that down the road or you delay the process or you delay these projects, in turn, it can cost even more years and years down the road. You'd also mentioned borrowing, what they could potentially also look at too. You know, I think of infrastructure and I think when a lot of people think of infrastructure, you immediately think roads, bridges, tunnels, water, railroads, right? And you're right, and it's important as well. I also think infrastructure, I think of internet connectivity. I think of broadband access as well. It's understanding where the needs for that are throughout Lackawanna County as well, being able to invest in that and making sure that the people of Lackawanna County, the students, the businesses, all are afforded the same opportunity as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana, so early this month, the county commissioners formally introduced ordinances that authorize borrowing 28.4 million for infrastructure projects. What infrastructure projects do you believe the county should prioritize if it's going to borrow money?
I think in order to borrow money, we should have, so a clear idea of how much projects are going to cost. And if something is broken, it absolutely needs to get fixed. If it's pouring water on your head and it's a roof, then it needs to get fixed. I don't know that, I haven't seen the list of projects. I don't know what projects are, they're calling, you know, that they absolutely have to get fixed. But I know like at home, I'm not going to pour money into remodeling my bathroom when my roof is leaking. So that kind of concept at the county with the roads, bridges, buildings, et cetera, prioritize the things that absolutely need to be fixed and also have a very clear, I'd like to see a very clear estimate on the projects from contractors, not just a dartboard with a, I think it's going to cost this much. So I haven't seen those figures, so I'm not sure if they have already done that. I don't, I haven't seen anything like that. So I'd like to see something more specific before we go and borrow too much money.
Thank you. Chris?
So all the commissioners didn't vote for that. I was the one that did not. First of all, critical needs. Prison roof, they say it's leaking. Okay, can it be repaired? It's not just 28 million. They're looking to borrow maybe 46 million. I don't think remodeling a courthouse is a critical need. I don't think, you know, like Diana just said, we don't have a list. I didn't see a list. I don't know what's going on. We have 150 bridges. Our Roads and Bridge Department keeps a close eye on all the bridges. They have a list of, from worst to best. And we tackle five, six bridges every year along with the help from the state. So we stay on top of our bridges. We have a couple temporary bridges that are put in place just in case if a bridge fails or it looks like it's going to fail, we can put a temporary in place. But to borrow 46 million dollars to give the incoming commissioners just fund money to spend 46 million dollars without a plan, I have no idea what they're planning on doing with this. Again, remodeling a courthouse, courthouse working fine. Right now, I don't think that's a critical need. We have 30-plus miles of roads. We have to do some road repair. It costs, it's astronomical what it costs to fix roads. But we do not have a specific dollar amount for what this bridge is going to cost or what it's going to cost to put the roof on the prison or what this is going to cost. I have not gotten a list. I think they picked that right out of the sky, the 46 million. But I'm not in agreement with that. You can't borrow yourself out of debt. Our main thing right now is to find the structural deficit in our budget and get this budget fixed before we start borrowing money and spending more money.
Thank you. What will be our last question is dealing with prison staffing and county staffing in general. um is dealing with uh prison staffing and county staffing in general. And Matt, you'll get this first. In July of 2023, the County Prison Board hired an internal investigator to investigate allegations of wrongdoing by prison guards, other prison staff, and inmates. The investigator began working for the county August 2nd and was no longer employed in the prison by August 21st. He was reportedly fired. When asked if he would hire someone to replace the fired internal investigator, the prison warden told a Times Tribune reporter that if a decision, quote, "If a decision is made to actively advertise for an internal investigation investigator, I will ask that it is posted on the county's website." So the question is, do you believe that all county positions for which the county is seeking applicants should be posted on the county website? Please explain your answer.
So do I believe when a job is available, it should be posted on the county website? Is that essentially what you're saying? I absolutely believe that that should happen. And um we talk about being fair and transparent, and that's, that's certainly one of the ways to be able to do it right now, right there. I understand the prison is a major challenge for us, over 30 million dollars um of 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 our budget. But um yeah, to answer your question very simply, yes. Thank you.
Diana, so the question again is, do you believe that all county positions for which the county is seeking applicants should be posted on the county website? And please explain your answer.
Yes, I think everyone should have a shot at a county job if that's what they want to do. And it is a convenient place these days to find what's open and what's not. Um I have a, I have one adult child searching, job searching, and uh we're going to websites looking for jobs, and that is a good, yeah, you go to the website first. Of course, it would be advertised in the paper as well, I would expect, and um it's helpful. Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
So I, we do advertise on our website about, you know, job openings and positions. But I mean, the key thing is to hire the most qualified people for every department, every, it doesn't matter what it is, whether it's somebody sweeping the floors or somebody running a department. Qualified people, it's just like running my own business. You want the best that you can get. You know, the stuff that's going on at the prison, that certainly needs to be looked at. But just like every other department, you need the best of the best that we can get. Um and it's a difficult time right now. People don't, I don't know what they're doing, but we can't get, nobody can get employees, whether it's the county or local businesses or whatever. It's it's very difficult. But advertising is just another way to be transparent and and to try to get the best qualified people.
Thank you. Bill?
Uh yes, I think it's a no-brainer that you would advertise any open county positions on the county website. To not do that uh would, first of all, not be right. And second of all, over time, if that's going to be the practice, I think people lose faith and credibility in their government if they think that something's being done under the cover of night, or that the government is pulling the wool over their eyes. The more transparent and the more ethical you can be, the better off that you're going to be as a government. And I think that's when you get more people involved in government uh and want to be involved on boards and commissions uh and authorities, if you are going to shine a light uh where the light has not been uh shined in a long time. So yeah, I think that should be a matter of general practice to advertise positions. And also, I'll go back again to a comprehensive review of every uh comprehensive review and analysis of every department, uh commission, board, and authority. Look at, the one thing I want to make sure, and Matt wants to make sure, is that we are employing best practices if we are elected as county commissioners. What are the best practices currently? And are we employing them? And that obviously, I think, would be a best practice to advertise those positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um and now I'd like to invite the candidates to give their closing statements. So you have two minutes each for closing statements. And Matt won that one, so you get to go first.
One and one. I didn't win it. Did I win it? I kind of just, we kind of just drew not. So I I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. It's been an incredible experience. Um you know, and it's, it's really incredible how close we are to to November 7. Look, we have 30 departments, there's 32 boards and authorities, there's four parks, there's over 1,100 employees. There's a budget north of 150 million dollars here. There's 40 municipalities here in Lackawanna County. And Lackawanna County has a chance on November 7 to elect their next leaders, their next commissioners for, for the next four years here in Lackawanna County. I think it's a crucial time. The stakes could not be higher. The choice cannot be clearer. Um you know, we need leaders right now more than ever before, like many of you in the room tonight. Excuse me. I was born here. I was raised here. My wife and I are now raising our family here. For me, this is an election about leadership. Leaders who are passionate about their home, leaders who are going to fight for their home, and leaders who are going to put doing what is right every single day ahead of everything else. Leaders who have vision, leaders who can see the future and the potential that Lackawanna County has. We need commissioners who are going to choose people over politics. We need commissioners who are going to choose action over inaction. And we need commissioners who are going to fight each and every day to restore faith back in Lackawanna County government. So thank you for your time. Um and uh thanks for the opportunity. It's a pleasure to be here once again.
Thank you. Diana?
Thank you for having us tonight. I um I'm excited to have this opportunity. I'm going to take my experience that I've had in Mayfield Borough with municipal budgeting and all of the other things that go along with local government. Um I have the experience it takes to work on a budget. We sit there with pencil and spreadsheets and uh work on it all the time. We're in the middle of budgeting season right now. I'm looking forward to doing that. But overall, it's really about public service. We each can do something in our communities. It might not all be running for office like the four of us are doing, but everyone has something that they can do in their community to make their little place in the world a better, a better spot. And we should all be doing something. And right now, we're, the four of us are happy to be running, I'm sure, and uh we're, I look forward to November 7th, and I'd ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
I'm going to start by saying thank you for having us. And also, you know, I'll reflect on what Matt just said, because he basically described what I've been doing for the past 40 years. I've worked very hard. Um and and what we need now is the most qualified, most experienced team. And with the le- leadership that Diana's had over the past eight years at her borough level, and for the the four years of experience that I've had in this in this county position, you know, that's what it's going to take. You know, I I I was one of them to help steer this this county through a worldwide pandemic when the whole world was shut down. You know, and my goal is to leave this place in a better, leave the county in a better place than I found it. You know, I start, I I did help, our pension fund wasn't funded for over many, many years. We didn't. We took care of the pension fund. It's our obligation. We s- we 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 had a lot of work to do there, but we 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 at least started the ball rolling. I put together the Suicide Prevention Alliance, something that was desperately needed in this county. They wanted it for years. I helped put that together. That's been a great thing. Another key thing, and we found out we needed it soon as the pandemic hit, Health Department. So we put together the Health Department. Um it's about ready to get started, to be open officially, but everybody's in there. The building's getting in in shape. People are learning what they need to do. Uh this last um flood that flood issue that we just had, we pulled people from that, those departments, and they got out to help do inspections on houses, and they were out looking at everything. I was out every day updating the uh the residents of Lackawanna County on the road closures and and things that were going on. So you know, it's 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 a lot of work. It's a hard job. Um I take my job very seriously. And um I enjoy it. And I go, like I said earlier today, I go to work every single day and and do what's right for the county, the residents of Lackawanna County.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you. I want to thank the University of Scranton. I want to thank Diana Campbell, Commissioner Chirmac, and Matt McGloin, uh my running mate for participating tonight. In the primary, I wasn't able to participate in that debate because my wife is in labor, so she's not in labor tonight, so we're here, thank God. Uh but thank you very much. It's time in this county for a new generation of leadership. It's time for a new vision, and it's time for new ideas. And Matt McGloin and I have campaigned now over the la- the last few months, and that's what we've heard from every single person that we've talked to. People are ready for a change. You know, selfishly, Matt and I are are in this for our children. I have five children under the age of eight. Matt has two beautiful young children. And we really, truly want to be involved in public service so that we can provide opportunities for our family, for your family, and for future generations of people in Lackawanna County. Public service is, and was in my house when I was growing up, an obligation and a responsibility to give back. I did that as a councilman for eight years. I've been involved in public service for over 10 years. It's important. We are not doing this for any other reason than we want to give back to our community. You know, over the past year, since I started campaigning and Mr. McGloin started campaigning, we've had the opportunity to meet so many wonderful people across this county. And I've thought ve- very often at the end of a long day of campaigning about my own ancestors, about those that came before us, who came from Ireland, Germany, Italy, Poland, and the contributions that they gave to this county. They weren't afraid. They didn't look behind them. They looked ahead. They built this county through blood, sweat, and tears. There's people in every level of government, even in their time, that wanted us to wait just a little bit longer. They wanted us to wait and continue to look behind and keep us where we are. We can't do that. Mr. McGloin and I want to move this county forward. It's time for a new generation of leadership, and we'd be grateful for your vote on Tuesday, November 7. Thank you.
Uh so we thank the candidates for giving of their time to engage with voters this evening. And we also thank ECTV for taping. Uh thanks also to our timekeepers uh and their, for their assistance, Kevin and Denise Nordberg, who are members at large in the Pennsylvania State League of Women Voters. Traditionally, the University of Scranton's Political Science Department and KEEPS have worked with the Lackawanna County League of Women Voters to host and coordinate candidate debates. Unfortunately, the Lackawanna County League of Women Voters recently disbanded. We thank the members of the County League for their decades of work for good government. Just remember, the last day to apply for a mail-in ballot is October 31st. The deadline to return your voted absentee or mail-in ballot is 8:00 PM on November 7th. And voting in person at your assigned polling place occurs on November 7th between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Thank you for watching this program sponsored by the University of Scranton Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service, and have a good evening.